Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 22nd, 2019 zoning board of appeals meeting. Let's do a little house cleaning here. First two items we're going to address is the appeal number 2019-005, Soundshore Road. That is going to be adjourned until the seeker questions and issues are satisfied. So that'll be an open adjournment. Somebody move that?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The second appeal, 2019-017, 1116 Main Road, Riverhead, will be adjourned till September 12th, 2019.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. All right, the next one is, you want to read them?
Sure.
Thank you.
Appeal, appeal number 2019-033, Michael Burgess, 16 Harbor Road, Aquabob, tax map number 600-113-223, RBA zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 31, where proposed front yard setback is 23.6 feet and minimum required is 60 feet, where proposed rear yard setback is 2.7 feet and minimum required is 75 feet, where proposed impervious surface is 35 percent and maximum permitted is 15 percent, and section 38, where existing dwelling is less than 1,500 square feet and no dwelling shall be erected unless provisions shall be made therein as follows. For a single-family dwelling exclusive of attached garages, carports, unenclosed porches and breezeways, there shall be provided not less than 1,500 square feet of living area for the first story.
Any lawyers in the group?
No, sir.
Please raise your right hand, whoever's going to testify. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God, please state your name and order and address.
I, John Cook. I do, 20 Sanderwood Lane, Riverhead, New York.
Ivanna Cook, I do, 20 Sanderwood Lane, Riverhead, New York.
And are you going to testify?
Michael Burgess, I do, 16 Harbor Road.
Okay, tell us what you're seeking.
We're seeking to erect a one-story deck over a patio and unbeknownst to us, there were so many different things. This is, it's a 400 square foot paver patio on the first section ground floor and a deck consisting of 264 square feet. And all of these things that are coming up are pre-existing prior to the purchase of the home. Mr. and Mrs. Burgess purchased the home in 2017 and we're seeking relief because these are things that we really can't change, the square footage of the home and the setbacks, but they do have a CO for the property.
So we're looking to build a deck in between the house and the garage?
Talk into the mic, please.
Sorry, we're looking to build a deck between the house and the garage. That's basically what we're looking to do and that's what we're seeking relief from because pretty much anywhere on the property that you want to build something, it's going to require variance. The properties are all very small there, so anything you want to do over there requires a variance.
Now, that deck's going to be below the roof line of the garage, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
And there'll be an outside set of stairs?
That's correct.
Correct.
It won't actually be connected to the house or the garage.
It'll be freestanding?
Freestanding.
Not that it makes any difference to me.
Right, but it, it's basically freestanding with its own staircase that goes up with a railing to code, everything built to code, obviously.
So I would hope, I would expect the owner's trying to get a view.
Yes.
Of some of the water, some of the creep.
So, on the, on the south side of this deck, he will be able to see past his neighbor's two-story house. Mr. Burgess has a ranch home, so we're looking to give him a little view of the water from over there.
Have you talked to the neighbor about it?
Everybody seems to be on board.
Yeah.
We haven't had any opposition.
Has the owner talked to the neighbor?
I have, I've spoken to, yes, I have. I've spoken to my next-door neighbors. I've informed them that I did want to build a deck, a second-floor deck, and a patio between the home and the garage. And it's a narrow space, really.
Yeah, no, we were there.
Okay, so you see the little space there? And we're trying to maximize that area and try to lift it up a little bit so we can get a little distance and perhaps some seasonal view.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that want to, wants to make a comment on this?
Now's your chance.
Okay, we've got it.
Okay, you're welcome to have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move at the appeal of Michael Burgess of 16 Harbor Road, Aquabob, which is tax map number 113 due 2-3. It's in the RBA zoning for a variance for relief from chapter 301, section 31, where the proposed front yard setback is 23.6 and the minimum required is 60 feet, where the proposed rear yard setback is 2.7 and the minimum required is 75 feet. Excuse me for a second, I just want to, are we sure this is in the RBA? Um, Carissa, I'm, I'm not sure, if this is RBA?
That's what the denial was made.
It seems like all those lots, that whole area was RBA 40 percent, I'm losing my head. But I'll finish reading it and then we'll just double-check just to make sure. And the minimum required is 75 feet, where impervious surface is 35 percent and the maximum permitted is 15 percent. And section 38, where existing dwelling is less than 1,500 square feet, no dwelling shall be erected unless provisions shall be made therein as follows. For single-family dwelling exclusive of attached garages, carports, unenclosed porches and breezeways, there shall be provided not less than 1,500 square feet of living area for the first story. Be approved in accordance with this application and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your variance has been approved, good luck.
Do you want me to pull it up?
Yeah, just pull it up on the zoning map, I just want to make sure. It just doesn't sound right.
Let him finish looking it up in a little process.
I just want to make sure. Do you have the zoning map? Says RBA in the letter, that Jefferson did. I know that there's been a lot of action in that department and the lack of staffing. Just want to make sure it's correct.
The RBA.
Okay, thank you. I'll take care of that. Thank you, sir.
We have one reserved decision that we're going to address at this moment. It's for appeal number 2019-026, 1315 West Main Street. I move at the appeal of 1315 West Main LLC, 1315 West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County, tax map number 600-119-2-38, RFC zoning for an interpretation of chapter 301, section 164C, specifying that a building used for firearm testing slash sighting is customary accessory to the existing river-related retail use on the premises, be granted in accordance with the written determination attached heretofore and incorporation herein. Second, someone?
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that variance has been greeted and good luck and don't let us down. Anybody that wants a copy of this, I don't know if it's available tonight or not.
Yeah, it's available.
Mrs. Pollack, if you'd like to have a copy, it's available. Okay? Good luck.
There was a condition in that, just so you know. There's a condition that we put in it, it was about the public range not being public, it's got to stay private to you as accessory, okay?
That's ours.
Just want to make sure of that. Okay.
Good luck. All right, Chris.
Appeal number 2019-034, Justin Camp, 32 Faith Street, Waiting River, tax map number 633-17, RBA zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 31, where proposed front yard setback is 38.5 feet and minimum required is 60 feet, proposed side yard setback is 25.5 feet and minimum required is 30 feet, and where proposed combined side yards are 60.9 feet and minimum required is 65 feet.
Turning?
Yes.
Go ahead. Say your name, please, and your address.
I will, Robert Connelly, 132 North Main Street, East Hampton, New York, 11937, for Mr. Camp.
Okay.
I did prepare a handout, I don't know if you'd like it, but...
Do you have an extra one?
I do.
It's a habeas corpus. This is fancy.
I try.
No, it's okay, it's good.
So, Justin bought this property about two months ago and it has a 564 square foot, one-bedroom cottage on it. Justin's looking to make this property more livable for the long term, it's not a short-term investment, so he needs to add approximately 560 square feet for an addition. The addition is going to extend into the westerly side yard setback by about four and a half feet, so he's going to have a 25 and a half foot setback instead of the 30-foot required, and the combined setback's going to be 60.9 feet instead of 65, 65 square, 65 feet. The front yard setback is going to be 38.5 feet, but it's going to maintain the same setback that the existing house has. So I think it's a fairly reasonable request.
Is he going to live there himself?
Yes. And right now, he's using the bedroom as a closet and he's using the living room for his bedroom, because he can't fit a bed in, in the existing bedroom.
Yeah, I think my first house was like that. Oh, God. Okay.
And if you look at the, the houses that are on Faith Street, it appears that most of them started off as cottages, like what is, what Justin's house is right now?
Yes.
And throughout the years, they've expanded and become more livable.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comments on this application? You folks have any comments?
I don't have a problem with it.
Who's got it?
Mr. Chairman. Do you have an extra reading? I guess I've already missed those of mine. Here it is. Sorry, I got a lot of government paperwork I have to answer. Okay, I move at the appeal of Justin Camp, 32 Faith Street, tax map number 3317, in the RBA zoning for variances and relief from chapter 301, section 31, where the proposed front yard setback is 38.5 feet and the minimum required is 60 feet, proposed side yard setback is 25.5 and the minimum required is 30 feet, and where the proposed combined side yards are 60.9 and the minimum required is 65 feet, be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your variance has been granted?
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your new house.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appeal number 2019-035, Sean Fisher, 28 Cedar Road, Waiting River, tax map number 627-395, RBA zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 222B, where garage increases gross floor area within the required front and rear yard setbacks representing an increase in degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconforming structure which is not permitted, and section 29A1A, where no accessory building or structure shall be erected, reconstructed or altered in a front yard.
Swear to tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Sean Fisher, 28 Cedar Road, Waiting River, New York.
Please state what you're seeking.
We had a 24 by 24 foot garage built after a zoning board of approv, uh, zoning board of appeals approval, and it turned out that it was built about a foot and a half offset from the approved plan, so we're back to just seek approval for the current position.
Initially, what was the initial approval as far as distance between the two buildings?
I think about four and a half feet. It ended up being four feet, but it's also off by about a foot and a half from one side.
Okay, so it's kind of tilted this way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we did some of the work ourselves and I, yeah, it ended up just being off.
Okay. And is that your wife in the audience?
No, she's on her way back from JFK, so, and our babysitter fell through, so that's why I end up bringing the kids.
I just want to see if your wife approved the garage.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll be living in it, so I'm going to be very intense.
That's what I was thinking.
Anyone in the audience comments on this application?
I move that appeal of Sean Fisher, 28 Cedar Road, Waiting River, tax map number 600-27-3-95, RBA zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 222E, where garage increase gross floor area within the required front and rear yard setbacks representing an increase in degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconforming structure which is not permitted, and section 29A1A, where no accessory building or structure shall be erected, reconstructed or altered in the front yard, be granted in accordance with the application and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your variance has been granted, good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Good night, now.
Appeal number 2019-036, Barbara Harowitz, 103 Winsway, Jamesport, tax map number 689-248, RBA 40 zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 17, where proposed side yard setbacks are 17.2 feet and 8.6 feet and the minimum required is 25 feet, and where proposed combined side yard is 25.8 feet and minimum required is 55 feet.
Okay, please raise your right hand, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name, both of you.
Robert Wilson, 115 Priscilla Avenue, Riverhead, New York.
Hold it down.
Barbara Harowitz, 103 Winsway, Jamesport, New York.
Are you the owner of the property?
Yes, I am.
Tell us what you're seeking.
Uh, we're seeking to do a small, oh, pardon me, we're seeking to do a small addition to the first and second floor of the house. The total increase in the footprint is approximately 300 square feet and the addition is designed in such a way as to follow the existing walls of the house, so we won't be increasing our degree of nonconformity. The house, as, as built, is already over its setback, side yard setbacks, so we're maintaining those distances and we're maintaining the same ridge height of the overall structure.
It is a very small addition, 300 square in the back, so the roof is equal to the roof that's on there as far as height?
The proposed, the ridge of the proposed addition is going to match exactly the, the existing ridge, yeah.
Are you the architect?
I'm the designer, yeah.
Do you have an elevation?
We do have an elevation, yes.
May we see it?
Sure.
I also have some photographs if you want.
Well, we were at the site. We were on the site.
Oh, you were, okay.
Yeah. You didn't see a bunch of strange guys sitting in the driveway? It's quite nice back there.
It's lovely.
It's very peaceful.
How many homes are back there? I never knew that, I've lived in the river at one.
Yeah, there are six.
How many?
There are six homes, uh, there are six homes in that area, three of which are two-story. Um, mine was built in 1928, uh, and then on either side of me is a one-story, these were cottages, uh, with no heat, no, you know, so, um, when I bought the house 13 years ago, I made it into a, a all-season home, and, um, my family's growing, so I needed some extra room.
Nice little house.
Yes, thank you.
Is anyone else in this audience that would like to speak? We do have a speaker. Come right up, sir. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do, sir.
Please state your name and address.
Uh, yes, I'm Richard Wines and I live at 73 Winsway, and I also own the, with my wife Nancy, we own the agricultural parcel that's immediately behind Barbara's house, and I also own a small one-story bungalow that my grandfather built that's immediately to the west of Barbara's cottage. So, um, obviously, any addition, you know, it does have an impact on us, and I have been communicating with Barbara. We had a number of concerns, three of our concerns, I think she's meeting, we were concerned about her construction start date because we had guests in our cottage immediate next door, so she's agreed to delay our construction start date by 10 days or so. We were concerned about construction traffic having to cross our agricultural parcel, you saw how beautiful that is when you came in there to look at the parcel, and I understand from Barbara that she's not going to be, she's going to be putting in a block foundation, so you won't need to bring in one of those big ready-mix trucks and things like that, so, so I think that concern is, is gone away. We are concerned that, that after putting addition on our house, she might be using it for a short-term rental, since that has happened in the past. I would like assurances from her that, for this board to hear that she's not going to do that, but our biggest concern is the increase in bulk of, of this property. If you look at the site plan that she submitted, it appears to be very, a very minor addition, you know, five feet here, filling out a little corner there, that sort of thing, but in fact, first of all, the site plan doesn't show the pergola on the back, but by my calculation, the overall square footage is increasing almost 50 percent and the overall bulk is increasing more than 50 percent, which seems unusual. The reason for that is that the, we're on the west and there's a very small addition that comes out to the west. Right now, it's not really an addition, it was part of the original construction. In fact, my grandfather built, my other grandfather built that cottage and it was my great-grandmother's bedroom. It sticks out about five feet and it's about nine feet up and has a little shed roof on it, so it has, you know, no impact, and when that grandfather built it, he moved his whole cottage off to the side of his property to create a, you know, nice light space between the two properties. But what this addition propose, proposes doing is instead of that 10 feet wide, nine-foot high shed roofed addition, there's now going to be an almost 26-foot high, 10, 20 feet, more than 20 feet, I think it is wide, addition with a gable roof that, that will overhang our property, and I have a little sketch here, I'm afraid it's just a rough sketch. Provided, Mr. Barber, I copy you, everyone, and the, uh, the dotted line shows that if it happens to be right outside was the main entrance to our cottage. And it's a little sketch of me standing there or anyone else standing there, and as you can see, this cuts out a lot of light because that gable roof is, is hanging, you know, basically over our property and also from our agricultural property in the back, that gable roof is, um, blocks a lot of sky view. So I have suggested, and I'm hoping that Barbara will agree to this, that instead of, I think this is a modest suggestion, I mean, we don't like that bulk at all, their application says it's not a self-inflicted hardship, but in fact, the zoning laws that are in place now were in place when she bought the property and she had every reason to know that, that additions are not allowed under the current zoning there with the side yard setbacks. So we've proposed a modest change, which would be, instead of putting a gable roof that comes out toward us, adding a shed roof on top of that, and I have a sketch, just my rough sketch again, but, uh, provided, Mr. Barber. So basically, we would be willing to support this application if she's willing to make this minor change to put a shed roof on top of that, so it wouldn't block nearly as much light for us, it wouldn't overhang our property by nearly as much, and if she's willing to agree to not offer the property for short-term rentals.
Mr. Wines, do you live in the big, the older house? Mr. Weins, do you live in the big, the older house, the tall house?
We live in the, um, right, it's a seventeen nineties, eighteen thirty-six, um, house. And we, we live in that house.
Well, that's way over.
Right.
So how does this addition block your view?
It doesn't block any views from there. It blocks views from our gardens, which are immediately behind, um, Barbara's house.
I saw the gardens, they were very nice.
Uh, thank you.
So, but I don't know how that would block your view of your gardens.
No, I said it blocks the sky view from back there. But I'm really concerned with the view from the, you know, from our cottage. That it overhangs, it's right there, we'll be looking up twenty-six feet, whereas now we're looking up nine feet. And it will give us a very uncomfortable feeling there.
When you're looking up, where's your cottage again, is it east or west of this building?
I'm sorry?
Where's this cottage, east or west of this building, this lady?
Uh, our cottage is on the west, uh, Barbara's cottage is east of ours.
And what's the cottage used for?
Our cottage? Uh, we use it for guests and we use it as a sports center. It's, you know, we have a sailboat and kayaks and things like that.
So you never rent it out, but you have guests in it?
We have picnics in front of it, um, and things like that. No, no, no.
You never rent it, but you have guests?
We have, we have never, ever considered renting it.
But that's fine.
Yeah.
But you have guests there that stay there?
We do occasionally have guests, right?
So you're concerned about their view as well?
Kids and things like that. Pardon?
You're concerned about their view?
I'm, I, well, we spend a lot of time there because, you know, it's our waterfront. And so we're often walking back and forth there. Uh, it is, you know, part of our property, we often have picnics in front.
But they, they own the property too, right? They own their property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
You have good neighbors?
Um, she's been a good neighbor.
You're a good neighbor?
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't put up with them.
Hopefully, we've been good neighbors too, so.
So by putting a shed roof up, as a designer, could you step up a minute, sir? What does that eliminate in that gable roof?
Putting a shed roof on it, oh, am I on the microphone? There we go. Uh, putting a shed roof internally wouldn't make much of a difference. Um, aesthetically, it would look very tacked on to the rest of the house. As, uh, Mr. Weins, uh, pointed out, there is a shed roof over the current, uh, you know, that we were talking about the, the five-foot bump out from the main body of the house. And there is a shed roof over that and it kind of looks like a lean-to attached to the rest of the house. And now it would just look like a two-story lean-to attached to the rest of the house. And since this is already going to have a gable end on the other four, on the other three of four ends of the house, um, I, aesthetically, I think that it would be an odd choice for the house itself and for the neighborhood in general to have a shed roof sticking off the side of the house.
Okay, Mr. Weins, I got another question for you.
Sure.
Please. On your drawing that you had with the arrows going up?
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean that your cottage is below the rear line of this, of their house, of this lady's house?
I'm sorry, sorry.
The way you have this, you know, you're standing here?
Right.
And you're looking at the back of her house like this.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean your cottage is, is behind the rear line of this house? In other words, if you drew a line across all the properties?
I believe it is a little bit, yes.
Is that really such a big block? I mean, I mean, I would think there are many more places around your cottage where you would have tremendous views, like waterfront and the sky and everything.
Ah, in front, we have waterfront, yeah, no question about that. But, uh, you know, it's, it gives, makes, it gives you an uncomfortable feeling when you have something, you know, right up there. And our cottage, our cottage actually is quite low. Uh, it has two shed roofs on it. Uh, it's part of the architecture, the historic architecture in the area. There's a shed roof in front and there's a shed roof in back, both of which were part of the original construction.
Well, I don't know.
It seems, seems like.
My opinion is that she's coming out five feet.
Mm-hmm.
And she's going two stories on this corner. That your property's to the west of it, correct?
Right, correct.
And you think that's overbearing and excessive?
Uh, like I said, the only thing that we're objecting to is putting a, a gable roof on top of that, which adds quite a bit of height. And we like to bring that down as low as possible, to have as much sky view from our cottage, as much sky view from the back. There's no.
Well, the sky view to me would be towards the water, not towards their house.
No, when you're walking, when you're walking along, well, in back, um, uh, yeah, we're looking toward the water and that's, uh, sky view that's.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, do, do you want the gable roof?
I think, I think architecturally, it makes more sense for the house.
Okay.
I, I also just want to say that.
Go to the mic, please, I'm sorry.
I, I want to say that it occurred to me, uh, today, as I was pulling out of my driveway, that, um, there's a very large tree that actually is doing what the new addition would do. Um, and that is block, uh, uh, Richard's sky view. Um, unfortunately, I have to take that tree down and replace it with the same amount of blockage, you know, um, uh, but this time it'll be structural. Uh, so there is no real sky view from walking back to their gardens because of this tree. So where the tree is will be the addition. It'll be a, it'll be essentially, um, a wash.
I mean, when I visited the site yesterday, or the day before, whatever.
Yesterday.
When I came around the bend, I looked and I, you know, you're looking at an elevation that's, uh, I'm looking south, of course. And I don't see it to be that excessive, I.
It's a small addition.
If you came out this way, I don't know how it's affecting the, the overall view of, the dimensional views of the whole property. The cottage, your property.
I d- I don't see it either, but.
I, I, I can't see what he's saying as blocking or making you feel uncomfortable, Mr. Weins. I, I just can't, I just can't visualize it at the moment. Now, did you say you have pictures with you?
I have pictures of, uh, of the property where the addition will take place, where, where I'd like it to take place.
Okay. Well, we have a survey.
Do you want to see the pictures?
Yeah, let, let us see the picture, please.
I, I just wanted to note that the tree she mentioned is actually marked on the survey you have there. Uh, this is a tree to be removed and it's inside the dotted line of the addition.
Oh, yeah.
I see. So they're essentially going to pull this out more. And to maintain the story height on the second story, you'd have to have that height of the gable, anyway, gable. So.
The partial house that's shown, and as you're looking at this picture to the right, is that Mr. Weins' cottage?
Yes, yes, it is.
Wow. That's pretty close.
This is Mr. Weins' cottage here?
Yes.
Okay, that's the east, right?
That's west.
West. Sometimes they ask me how far, uh, he's not, he's almost even with the house.
So I'm fa- that you're looking at it facing south?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just trying to visualize it. I mean, you don't live in the cottage, right, Mr. Weins?
Um, we don't live in it currently, um, we have, um,
You go back and forth.
in past years and who knows what our kids will be doing in the future.
It seems to me if they take that tree out and they come out five feet, I don't think there's going to be that much adverse impact on it, but that's just my opinion. Okay.
Mm-hmm. Can I see this?
Uh, to me, it seems like as a neighbor, you're giving up a lot of rights so far already. And I think you've been very polite, um. I would see you like to do what you'd like to do as far as your elevations are concerned. That, that's all that really counts, because you have paid the taxes and you live there. So I have a tendency to disagree with Mr. Weins on this one. Apologize, but that's how I feel. So. I have no further comments, Mr. Chairman.
I was out there also with Mr. Barnes and, uh, this picture here, Mr. Weins, that has your cottage in it? Okay, well, these mics are alive, come on up. Show them that picture there. The way this is drawn, okay? The impression is that you are behind this house, looking through this addition.
Actually, uh, what I'm doing is standing on the side of our house. Our cottage, you can't even see the edge of our cottage in this picture, unfortunately.
No, but it's not sunk way back, it's almost even with this house. It looks like on that picture.
Um, you know, our cottage is about the same, it's a little bit further back, I believe, in the, in the back. Um, and it's only, our cottage is only ten feet from the property line, I should add. And so, so that little ten-foot space is our, you know, main walking space back and forth from our.
So again, I, I have a trouble visualizing this. I can't see where this is blocking anything. I mean, if I owned this cottage and all that, I'd be to the side or to the front of it, looking at the beautiful water views and not looking through somebody's trees, you know what I mean? And then you got a beautiful property there.
Yeah, that's all, it's just an opinion.
Yeah.
I'm ready.
Okay.
I move that appeal of Barbara Horowitz at one oh three Winsway, Jamesport, tax map number six hundred eighty-nine dash two dash forty-eight, RB forty zoning for variances and relief from chapter three oh one, section seventeen, where proposed side yard setbacks are seventeen point two feet and eight point six feet and a minimum required is twenty-five feet. And proposed combined side yard of twenty-five point eight feet and a minimum required is fifty-five feet be granted in accordance with the application and the sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Some move.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so good luck. And, uh, you know, I hope this isn't cause friction in the neighborhood, I hope you guys get the alarm together. Mr. Weins, you got a beautiful property back there, okay? I've, I've never been there and I've been in Riverhead since nineteen fifty and I says, wow.
It's impressive. It is.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Like it back there. Okay, enjoy.
Enjoy.
Do the chairman make a motion that we accept the minutes?
So move.
For last meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to close, is that right? Oh, sure, we had a motion to get paid? No, motion.
Motion for a raise?
No. Who's that, the motion for closing?
Are there any other motions that we need to make?
No.
Besides the minutes?
No. Just the closing.
I make a motion that we close the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. May you all have a safe evening, may you have a great weekend. And if you're hungry, you know where to come.